All righty, we have already opened our meeting with an executive session which has been concluded. Now time to call this portion of the meeting to order and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is public comment. Anybody wishing to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number four, wastewater treatment plant discussion. And Councilor Hawkins will lead this along with support from Wayne Elliott from Augurton Elliott. Welcome. And Alan Rotway.
Wayne, thanks for showing up.
Well, you can.
No, while you're off.
You're out of show, don't worry, we're actually doing our own.
So I have occasion quite a bit to associate with the groups and people that have a lot of interest in the quality of the water on Lake Champlain. In the past year, I've taken a lot of questions, and the more I hand them around with them, the more complicated the questions are getting, and I'm not sure I'm giving the right answers. All right, so the city, as you know, on a regular basis takes a lot of heat for all of the water down there, when it stinks down there, when the water's green, when there's a discharge notification and messenger reports on it. So I compiled with the suggestion of several people a number of questions that I wanted to ask of both of you. I wasn't expecting to have you here, Wayne, because I think Alan was sufficient to answer the questions in a manner that would satisfy the people who have been questioning me. So be it as it may, since he's here and the both of you are here, I'd like to just go through these. If the council would just indulge me, let me go through the list of questions, have Wayne answer them one at a time, and then at the end you can provide additional questions, just in the event that ones answer later on the list of questions that I have. So either Al or Wayne, will you explain what normally causes the discharge from the treatment plant to the waters of Lake Champlain? On a normal basis, what is that?
So as you're aware, you know, the city's a little bit unique. You have a combined sewer system. You know, that was the older type of system, you know, that was pretty common back in the 60s. There aren't too many of those left in the state. You know, Brownington is one city of origin. So what that means is about 20% of your area takes the stormwater, so when you get a heavy rainfall event, it goes into the catch basins, and those pipes convey it in your sewer system, so all that flow is transported down to the wastewater plant for treatment. Basically, there is a pumping step in there, but generally what comes into the plant goes out by gravity. Everything that goes out of the plant is disinfected, it's measured, and it runs in a pipe about two and a half miles where it discharges into the Stevens Brook wetlands area, and then from there it still waves before, you know, kind of officially, it's the lake.
So what specifically goes into the lake? What specifically goes into those waters in a stormwater event?
So there's two things that happens there. Is under normal day-to-day operations, everything's fully treated. What this discharge is what we call a tertiary level of treatment. So that means everything from the biochemical oxygen, man, close suspended solids, phosphorus, very high degree of treatment. It's disinfected with chlorine, which removes the bacteria, so that's what is treated. The city is required to sample that, monitor that continuously, and make sure that's in full compliance with your MPDES discharge permit, which is issued by the state. Now, on occasion, what happens because of a combined system, and this is allowed as part of your discharge permit, is up to everything that comes into the plant receives a level of preliminary treatment. What that means is seeing the grit removal. It's also passing through some grinders, so that's what we call the headwork structure. Then it is going through your primary treatment clarification process, and then that next step's removing floatables, scum, again solids, and in addition to DOD removal. Anything from eight million gallons and below continues to the rest of the treatment process, so that's receiving the biological treatment, the secondary clarification, and the tertiary through the filters. Anything over MGD, eight MGD, is what we call a bypass. That is disinfected and measured. In addition to the treated flow that's coming from the rest of the treatment process, that's combined, is what we call blended. That is sampled, tested, and everything per your discharge permit to make sure you're in full compliance. So that's all combined, blended in that same pipe, transported that two and a half miles to the Stevens Brook wetland, and ultimately makes its way to the lake. Does that answer that question you took?
It does. And that's specifically during a storm event?
That's correct, yeah. It could also happen in the spring, you know, when the ground's frozen, you get some stone melt. So it's anything that's really wet weather influenced, you know, a rainfall event or any type of city that can still fall. Stone melt event could happen in January, February.
So there's no time that anyone down at the treatment plant, or any valve, or any stream that goes into the lake or the Stevens Brook, is it Stevens Brook Tributary, is that what you call it?
Yeah, yeah.
There's never a time to draw sewage going in there?
From the treatment.
From the treatment?
That's correct, yeah.
Is there ever a time to draw sewage going in there from anywhere else?
So separately, the city does have a combined sewer overflow. That's part of your discharge permit. You do have 1272 order. That's located up on Lower Weldon Street, okay? What happens on occasion, and we track this probably going back now, I think, seven or eight years, again, if it's a wet weather influenced event, you know, high rainfall intensity, or you have days, or you have multiple rainfall events consecutively, all that flow can't get to the treatment plant. So on Lower Weldon Street, there's a manhole where it's on discharge, this is all low ground on the pipe, that flow is recorded. Now, what happens there is if you're looking at the total flow that's in the system right there, it's relatively diluted. It is discharged in the pipe to the Stevens Brook. That is, again, part of your discharge permit. The city's been taking steps over the last few years to try to mitigate that and abate that. The state's aware of that. If that overflow does occur at that location, you know, we know when it started and stopped, we know what the volume is, and again, we know what's occurring, and the city's required, and they do, they report that to the state within 12 hours.
Okay, let me just stop you there. I might have missed it. What is going into that manhole, or that pipe on Lower Weldon Street?
So that's out of your sewer collection system, so that's a mixture of sewage and stormwater.
So when I'm flushing my toilet at home, some of that could be going into that Lower Weldon Street pipe?
Possibly.
And that Lower Weldon Street pipe during a storm event could be being transferred, conveyed to Stevens Brook Tributary?
Yeah. Now be mindful of that, that's not 100% sewage, okay? Realistically, if you're looking at all the flow in there, it's probably in the range of 15%. It's relatively diluted, okay?
And the other 85% is stormwater?
That's right, yeah.
And I believe Alan, you actually stated that in a messenger article at some point in time, I remember reading, that you said the majority of whatever gets into the into the system that's being discharged into the lake, if that ever occurs, is stormwater. Rainwater?
The majority, yes. You know, that's why Wayne's sitting here. Wayne's an engineer. I can tell you that in a real heavy rain event, when we exceed eight million, and that happens, I mean, we could be flowing at 18, 19 million gallons down there. So if you just do a little bit of the math, it could be an eight to 10 to one dilution.
Eight means eight million gallons from one single rain event?
Well, it's based on 24 hours. So you may have that for, that chart may read that for like two hours, until the event slows down. And then, at the end of 24 hours, you may have found it actually averaged about 11 million. It's the intensity in which it comes, that's when it, that's when we have issues.
So explain that a little bit, Tim. So on average, normal day, you know, your treatment plant is permitted for four million gallons per day. You know, you're putting probably two to five million gallons per day on a normal dry day. In a heavy rainfall, as Alan mentioned, where you have rainfall consecutive days, high intensity, those flows can get up to, you know, 12, 13 million, and the treatment plant just can't handle that. That's why four, five, six times a year, you have that overflow situation.
Why can't the treatment plant handle that? Because you don't have enough ponds?
Pipes aren't big enough to take it all the way from Lower Weldon, you know, north to the plant, and also you don't have the capacity of the plant to handle that additional flow.
Okay, what does that mean, capacity? So I don't, there's not another holding pond? We can hold that stuff in? Do we have room down there for another pond?
It's difficult with the water table, the groundwater table down there. That's a very challenging site to construct anything in the ground. The water table, I was there a couple weeks ago, and the water's at ground level. Very, very difficult site to build anything to operate.
And so the only other alternative would be to have?
Build up.
A holding?
That's right, up, you know, above ground, something that you would pump. Now to be...
Which is not impossible to do, it's just that the city just doesn't do it because of...
As part of the combined sewer, the city is going to be required with a new discharge permit to submit a long-term control plan, and one of the measures of which the city does comply with is they want as much of that flow to get to the treatment plant as possible in every event, because they obviously want it to get there and want it to be treated. And so that's, that's one of the measures on the list, is you want to get as much of that that there as you can.
And we're doing that, Al?
By gravity. It's all just flowing downhill, so that's, as much of that is getting to the plant as possible, Tim.
So specifically in the upgrades that we're doing, is that going to lessen the amount of discharge during a rain event?
No.
There's nothing, nothing in the upgrades that we're doing that's not a lessen?
It addresses the age-related issues. You know, most of the equipment systems down there are 30 years old, and the other part of that, as you're aware of, is to comply with the lower phosphorus limit. That's part of the Lake Champlain TM, you know, and the city received the draft permit here about three or four weeks ago.
However, the council's talking a number of times about if there's excess fund, the bond authorization fits in the CSO. So if we fix the Lower Weldon CSO, that's, you know...
If we're looking at the best place to spend dollars, is it better to spend dollars to fix the CSO or build another tank? Where do we get the most bang for our buck?
That's why we're monitoring.
The fix down there would be more pipe and pump capacity?
Bigger pipes, yeah. Bigger treatment processes.
On Lower Weldon.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, effectively, that's in the plan. We just haven't got to the final financing, and we have to come back and say to the council, all right, now let's do this.
And also, also the city is in compliance with the permit. You know, you're going to get an updated 1272 order, and within that, there's an 18-month timeframe for the city to develop that plan. One of the things that's tough about a combined sewer overflow is we can predict sewage flows exactly, very predictable. Rainfall is a whole different thing, because it matters when it occurs, is the ground frozen, you know, is it in the spring, you know, what's the intensity? Do you have rainfall over consecutive days? That's why we've had the monitoring station here for about five or six years, so we know when it starts, stops, what, how that's tied to the rainfall intensity, total rainfall, you know, what the volume of the heat flows are out there. And I guess the other thing I would add, Tim, just to be, you know, clear, your question was pretty specific about is anything that the city's doing at the treatment plant going to help the situation? No. But the city, over the last four or five years, has done several projects to reduce the amount of stormwater, the rainwater that's going into the sewer system to try to better abate that. And that's a whole combination. There were things done, the street skate project on Main Street that was helping to reduce that, the ability to take some of the roof drains off from the flat, with the commercial buildings. You know, any of the work in Lane Street, Bell Street is, we're looking, putting in separated storm sewer systems, again, to get that flow out of the sewer system. When the Fairfield Road reconstruction was done, there were some very large drainage areas that were taken off the sewer systems. So the city's been proactive on that over the last few years in several projects. Again, it's just, it's a whole combination of things, you know, that are going to kind of help to abate that, you know, make you into compliance ultimately.
Is there a diagram, or a sheet, or a matrix developed anywhere by anyone here, or anyone that has to do anything with the city, that has identified the stormwater points that need to be repaired?
Absolutely, yeah. Now, separation, 100% separation, probably not going to be a solution. You know, as it is, continued and has been and will continue to be, it's probably going to be a combination of things. And there's a bunch of reasons for that. They, you know, they get the long-hanging fruit back in the 90s, anything that was an elevation, higher feet fit, what the pipes in. You know, the challenge that you guys have is once you get down, you know, to the east of us here, very flat, very hard to transport that water anywhere where it can be treated properly without, without pumping. You know, City of Ramon has about six overflow points, and I was with Jeff Winberg this morning. They're looking at a price tag, they can't even separate everything, it's $130 million. I mean, that's the kind of magnitude they're looking at. They don't think they can even do what they need to. So separation, it's a combination of things in the toolbox, you know, that are going to have to be used to kind of abate those other flows.
Since you're on that subject, it fits right into the next couple of questions I have, and I'm just about done, counsel. How is the state of Vermont North like when there is a discharge?
We do a lot of contact. The first report's done within an hour. Wayne referred to the appointment that we use with it, had it in there, I guess since 2007 or eight, some version of it. Recently, included within the last couple of years, it's web-based, and everything instantaneously. And the minute we go into overflow, it sends an alarm to me, Brian Byrne, Brian Lett, and everybody follows up accordingly. And the first follows it to the state of Vermont. You have to make that within an hour, or you better have a good excuse before you didn't do it. At least a phone call. And then within 12 hours, you better do a more formal report. But I tend to agree with what Wayne said earlier, just sometimes where we might go a little bit different ways is, I think it's, more separation is very key to reducing the frequency of the influx, and getting them to whatever homin頑ly he says. It's like floor drains in L L people's houses. I use L L people because they're strapped for money. And to get every seller in the city separated, which is what you'd have to do, because most of the older homes, your sewer service goes out of the house, and nine out of 10 of the older homes, the perimeter drains go out the same pipe. So to ask that person to separate those can be quite a cost burden to them. So we'll never get totally separated, but I do, I do think separation is on the horizon at some level.
What are we, when, when the city gets notified of a discharge, are we immediately, do we have a fine to pay, or a penalty to pay?
No, you have a 1272 order, and that's been in place for, that's basically a legal order.
What does that do for us? 1272 order allows us to discharge whatever we want?
It means that the state recognizes that you've got a problem, and you're working on solutions to try to address that. It has a timetable in there. For example, it documents the past history of what's gone on here. It also documents the projects, the improvements that you've done over the last few years. Typically, with the combined sewer overflow issues, the state will buy you a fairly flexible time and phasing. And part of the reason for that is not one project is necessarily going to correct the problems. St. Albans is alone, there's probably a dozen other Vermont communities that have been facing these same issues. In many cases, they don't have one CSO, they've got even four, five, or six. So what the state's trying to do is they require a progress report be submitted every December of every year. You know, and that kind of outlines the projects that you've done over the prior year, and documents, you know, when they've occurred, and that's in addition to the notification that the staff does, documents when they occurred, you know, what the volumes were, the frequency. And what the state's trying to do there is, you know, see if you're gaining, you know, if you're gaining on a problem. And in addition to that, you've got this long-term control plan that's going to be due in 18 months, and that's going to outline, you know, document, you know, what we've observed there, what's going on. And that's really the need of it, Tim, is to dive back into some of the solutions and look at some alternatives, so you've got really kind of a plan going in place. And so it's not really, it's not that they allow you to do that, it's that they know you've got an issue here, and you know, part of that is that you're working toward, you know, working towards a solution. See?
So my final question, there are two, but I'll combine them into one. Is the smell and the algae that is persistent in the month, in the late summer months down in the bay attributable to the operation of the St. Albans City Treatment Plant?
Starting with the CSO, I'd probably say no, because that's a pretty infrequent occurrence. You know, that's something that's only happened probably half a dozen times a year. Relative to the treatment plant, and so to put that perspective a little bit, this is for the entire lake, only about 3% of the phosphorus from the Lake Champlain is contributed from municipal wastewater plants. I don't know the specific number for the Siskiyou Bay as far as what's coming from the half a dozen municipal plants out of there, but typically the city is well below your permit limit. Everybody understands that, you know, partially some of the causes of that are the nutrients, which are the phosphorus and nitrogen. So to kind of back up a little bit, you know, overall, the municipal treatment plants, in many cases, discharging well below the permit limit. Overall, the discharging less than 3% of the phosphorus going into the lake. So beyond that, the two other major sources, you know, primarily are the developed land, it's stormwater, and the other piece of that is the non-point sources, which are the agates and those other things. So those are the two major contributors to the phosphorus in the lake. The other part of that is if we have the phosphorus embedded in the sediment in areas like the bay, you know, and that's accumulated from years and years of everything, you know, going back 40, 50, 70 years of development, and that's just there. That has nothing to do with what's going in there now. So even if they shut the faucet off, and everything's going into the bay, there's still that phosphorus embedded in the sediment, it's there, it's going to stay there. So it's a combination of those things.
So the answer to my question was either yes or no?
I don't know that I have a definitive. I would say that I could, the city treatment plant is a very minor contributor to the nutrient phosphorus loading in the lake, and will continue to be. I might point, I know I'm not quite answering your question directly, but it's, the phosphorus, which is the primary cause of the algae, has contributed a whole lot of different sources in the past and moving forward. And the treatment plant is a very minor contributor of that phosphorus.
So when I'm down there in a boat, and I smell something foul in the lake, and someone says, geez, the city just dumps them in the lake, the clear answer to that is not likely.
That's correct.
Well, thank you for...
Less than 3% of that smell.
Thank you for answering those questions. And counsel, I just hope that this is a clear, non-technical record that people can take a look at when they have those questions for us, or me, or anyone, and we can say, look, here's the answer to those questions. Hopefully, the messenger does a good job in providing some detail.
This was well done. Thank you, Tim. And thanks to both Wayne and Alan. I think we were doing a little clip of the city council meeting specifically. This was about 10 minutes or so. Had that on the website. Really informative.
The thing that's interesting about everything he said was, I keep going back to the EPA meetings I attended, and I think everybody in the room attended at least one of those. And when you're looking at that pie chart, and you're looking at that 3% that Wayne talks about, and they're talking about the direct discharge of the sewer plant, and we're that 3% number, and they're very clear that if they don't get the phosphorus under control in the next, I don't know how many years, then they're going back after the point sources, because they know them, which are sewer plants, and they're going to say, and they'll knock you down even further. So, I mean, any is too much. I'll admit that. When you look at the big picture?
Well, the concept there is, that I've always heard is the lake is the lake, the bay is the bay, and we're a big contributor to the bay. And so what I'm hearing is a little bit different tonight, but...
Do you see more, a higher frequency of the storms, or higher intensity? Has that shifted over?
That's the whole, you know, climate change. You know, we had a very dry year last year, so the CSOs really weren't an issue. I mean, we had very little kind of wet weather influence, and of course, we looked at, felt like it rained every day until...
CSO definitions?
Combined sewer overflow, yeah. Whereas this year, we had a fairly wet period for about 68 weeks, you know, through the spring, and you know, just the weather patterns seem to be different, you know, even regionalized. You know, the storm intensity, you're greater, which is the whole, it's inconsistent, you know, it's definitely, you know, the climate changes, changed, absolutely changed the weather patterns. What we see is it's less predictable.
I've been asked to participate on the governor's Climate Action Commission as a municipal government representative, not a representative of the city, the city office per se, but just to represent municipal concerns. So this is certainly something that will help me to bring information to that meeting. Thank you. Okay, how are we doing on temperature? You all right?
It's good with me, we're, we're...
Okay, we're cold.
You can turn it down.
Don't, don't get up.
Tim can do it.
You want to run it off?
Party to do it.
Turn it off?
Off?
Done.
Thank you.
There is no low and high, I think, it just falls off.
On or off, all right. Okay, next up, we have got a request for extra territorial water and wastewater allocation. This is up for discussion and vote. And we've got Sam Ruggiano here this evening, from Ruggiano Engineering. And in your packet, we have the application, the affiliation, the application. Sam, would you like to join us at the front, please?
You can sit back there, get up to the house.
Okay, so we've got the application in our packet. We'll give you a minute or two, or however long it takes, just to introduce us to the request. Thank you.
Okay, this is for 144039CanadaInc, which is Sebastian Lufo. He purchased the property back in 2005. And if you look in your packet, he was one of the five contributors to the intersection improvement of 1436. He's had plans of developing this for a while, and then we had the sewer and water moratorium that kind of completely went on hold, plus the crash and everything else, that real estate crashed, it kind of put everything on hold. He is now resurrecting the project, and is starting to do some marketing, and the uses that we're proposing are speculative. He has nobody concrete, but he's had people kicking tires with those uses. So he's figuring that he would obtain the sewer and water allocation as a first step in pursuing approvals for this project. It's three, three separated structures. One's a bank, one is a retail warehouse. And when I say retail warehouse, it's something like an FW Web kind of facility, something in that category for retail. It's too big, too small for a Costco or anything like that, but something in that that line. And then a medical office building, 30,000 square foot medical office building. And we're just at the start. So we've gone through the town, they have approved the allocation, and we're at this point.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
You're saying that he's kicking tires, and there's nothing definitive yet. He's looking for the allocation. Is it pretty much firm that those are the three types of, I mean, are you going to get an allocation, and then change the use of what they want to put in there, or?
It's not, I don't think that's his intent, but that could happen.
What's, what's the process, if that were to...
You'd have to read the files.
I would think, that's where I was going, I was...
Okay. Counsel members, we've got a packet with quite a bit of information. Any additional questions at this point?
Make a motion to approve the allocation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will take a motion to recess for liquor control.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hi, Sue.
Hi.
Calling the meeting out liquor control board to order. Good evening. Let's see, this is agenda item number two. We have a liquor violation, eighty-four main sports girl. Good evening, sir. What's your name?
Cyrus.
Great. And Sue, do you want to set the stage?
He has a, he received a letter of warning from the Department of Liquor Control for the sale of alcohol beverages. He was an underage person.
Okay. And anything to add to that?
No, what happened, just explanation.
Did your person, was your person not able to read the ID? Did they card the person?
They read the ID.
Yeah.
But the year, she missed read the year.
Miscounted it?
Yeah. But then when she recollected, she poured the beer.
Yeah.
And then when she asked the lady for the ID, she had already poured the beer.
You know that there are electronic, little electronic devices about the size of this, and every day it puts the year that is good or bad for you, and you can just read. Do you have that?
We have it posted on paper here.
Okay. So you have it posted, but you don't have the electronic device?
No, I don't have the electronic.
Okay. And so she couldn't read that?
That was a mistaken reading. She should--
And you said she poured the beer before she asked for the ID?
No, she asked for the ID, she looked at the ID, but she missed read the year. But then it's something clicked in her mind that it was not looking right, but she had already poured the beer. So when she asked the young lady for the ID, she had it for the ID and we checked it after. That's where you got the champagne.
And this was the first-- where's the first?
Sue, are you usually saying first offensive or just a letter warning? I usually see the fines.
Yeah, I do too. That's--
The reason why it was just a warning is because--
No presumption?
She didn't, it wasn't, didn't get the beer. In the hand.
Okay, just poured it?
She just poured the beer. When she poured the beer, okay, she poured the beer, had a beer. Then she, something wasn't clicking right, so she asked the lady back for the ID.
Got it.
She poured the beer and put it on the bar.
But she took the beer away after?
Yeah. Well, no, there was a guy who came in with, I was in the back at the time.
Okay, okay.
A guy came in, was with the young lady.
Okay.
And he called the office hours and told her that she poured the beer. So he came in and he said, it's, we just gave you a warning because she recollected it back. She checked back the ID because she, something clicked in her mind that it wasn't looking right.
Yeah, got it.
She asked the young lady back for the ID, while she was looking for the ID, the other person was called John.
Guess we can say bad, but good.
Yes, okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you for coming in to share that with us and trust that this is an exception to the rule.
I'm very strict with it now that every, just Friday I had a piece with a couple of young guys who didn't want to show their ID, who didn't want to leave, and I was something that I think was very serious.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We've got minutes of the previous--
Of your group meeting minutes, slide hands to the left.
Sorry.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Any other business? Sue?
Motion to adjourn for liquor control move up to this rate of the council.
Okay. Second from Chad. All right. Okay. Downtown Board is next. We have an interview. Oh, Rachel Singh. Good evening. This is her position on the Downtown Board. Welcome. And as usual, the council has a packet before them. Thank you for sharing information about what interests you in the Downtown Board. Normally, we have a number of people, so we go through a sort of regimented interview process. I'll just ask you to introduce yourself and share with us a little bit about what drives you to want to join the Downtown Board.
Sure. My name's Rachel Singh. I grew up here, I live here. I'm really, I'm looking to get a little bit more involved with my community in a different way than I have in the past. I've worked for a couple of nonprofits in the past, and now I'm over at Darrenner's. So I'm focusing now mostly on marketing and social media marketing, event planning, so I'm really wanting to bring some of that onto the Downtown Board.
Great. Yeah, that's wonderful. We are looking at, so let's see, what type of a term, staff recommendation that if we make an appointment, that we not give you a short time receipt which would expire this December, rather go to twelve thirty-one nineteen or twelve thirty-one seventeen? See, going to extend the term to the end of 2020. Got it. Do you have a preference, yourself?
No. I can be proud of this as long as I want.
Okay.
I would think if we took the twelve thirty-one seventeen, so we extended it to 2020, then we're not in here interviewing again in another month or so for the short seats. So that's why--
Make a motion?
Motion to appoint Rachel to the twelve thirty-one seventeen seat, but to extend the term of that to twelve thirty-one twenty twenty.
Second?
Yes.
Discussion? All right. Congratulations.
You're the director.
Oh, is it all in favor?
Hi.
No, it's a father and mom. All right. Second hearing for the draft city plan.
Hello, thank you.
Hello.
None of the planning goals have changed since the first hearing. Actually, I have copies for anyone who wants to. I'm all set. Thank you. All right. Here. Come through that here. Would you like to talk?
Proud is dwindling.
Because they were kind of all in general public here.
But everyone in the general public, you know who we're talking about.
We're all watching on channel.
Since the first hearing, the planning goals haven't changed, the planning commission has not changed their report on their opinions of it. There are, I think, three areas where we've added some text. If you'll go, if you'll flip to page thirty-two. We added in descriptions of the BARTs opiate treatment clinic and the Franklin County Home Health Agency, that was requested of the council at the last meeting. And then the planning commission asked that the council consider mentioning a little bit more about tourism from the north. So on page forty-eight, at the bottom, it mentions that there is a custom port of entry at Highgate, because there's a list of ports. We don't really have much of it. We mentioned the nearby airports, and now the planning commission suggested we mention the custom port of entry at Highgate. But if you flip back near the beginning, on page thirteen, and this is under one of the policies having to do with the goal of ensuring that downtown thrives as a center of commerce, culture, and community. We added policy number fourteen, which you'll see on page thirteen, that the city supports efforts to facilitate and encourage tourism from Quebec, including initiatives improving processing speeds at nearby US customs ports of entry, construction of the proposed A35 auto route in Canada, and the reestablishment of in-track train service to Montreal with a stop in St. Albans. Those are the only changes since the first hearing.
Any questions?
Chip, this is going to be reviewed by NRPC. Is that correct?
So what happens, what could happen is that once the city council adopts this plan, this becomes our plan. For many programs, most of them grants, they also want the regional planning commission to approve the plan and confirm our planning process. So once you adopt it, we no longer have an expired plan, we have a new plan. We do benefit from having that extra step of the RPC looking at it and approving it. Their staff has looked at it, and many of the changes we presented to you at the first hearing were actually from their staff's comments. So we're relatively sure that the regional planning commission will approve this plan as well.
Thank you.
It does help if in your motion to adopt, you officially request that NRPC can do it.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
Is it a vote for motions?
Oh, so this is--
It's a public hearing, right?
Right. So, okay, we're done with the public hearing. We'll move into the next agenda item, and I'll take a motion to consider revisions of adoption of the 2017 city plan and request NRPC confirmation.
I apologize, I agree.
That's okay.
I'll move that we adopt the city plan with the revisions as presented and request that the regional planning commission also review.
Sergeant.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, a second reading and hearing for two items. These are city ordinance amendments, one for no smoking areas and one for time parking.
We could start with the Stoll Street.
Yep.
It's basically just adding Stoll Street to a list of downtown streets that is two and a half hour parkage from eight to five.
And so, do you want to, so we've got that. If there are no questions on that, do you want to do the second reading on no smoking areas, and then we'll move on to the agenda item to consider adoption?
Yes. The no smoking area amendment is to amend Title Seventeen to include definition of smoking and then say that the covered pedestrian alleyway on Main Street between Twigs and Eaton is now no smoking area, and that the city greenbelt and sidewalking the right-of-way around the Little League Fields at that corner, that that is also now a no smoking area.
Questions?
One question on Stoll Street. Are we going to have signs up before school starts?
Stoll.
Or, sorry, Stoll. I would get those two mixed up.
Yes. We're trying to get the ordinance in place before the signs go up.
I agree. Thank you.
Maybe if you have to do it in Sharpie and cardboard.
We've got someone's up.
We're putting sidewalks on there on that street as well, so we're trying to get all that work done before school starts.
Okay. Have they even pulled the sidewalks on that street?
I'm sorry.
All right. I'll move into the next agenda item to consider adoption of the ordinances.
I move that we adopt the city ordinance amendments for the no smoking areas and the time parking.
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Downtown Board events calendar. Good evening.
Good evening. Trevor Johnson, vice chair of the Downtown South.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for seeing us. The Downtown Board set a subcommittee for action investigative community calendar that would help affect the entire area around us, within the city and beyond. The last couple of months, we've been working on some preliminary site build as well as, I can't remember the name, as everyone knows branding is the hardest part. We did identify a name, we passed it to the Downtown Board. It's Around Our Town. The website would be AroundOurTown/events. It's available. That's one of the key things that we had come out. We went through about fifty different names. Unfortunately, half of them were eliminated by, as you know, so many names are being taken. So what we're coming before the council for is today, the approval for the name only. The branding and other components will be passed by the council at another day before we go live.
This is a major initiative of the Downtown Board and staff, so we thought it would be a good idea to bring the council in and let you know that it's happening. The calendar would sort of be its own entity that would serve all the organizations in the county that would like to put events there for people to see. There would still be a downtown website that would have a list of events that are just for downtown. They'd be fed from this parent website. And at the same time, it would help everyone else see what's going on in the county and provide a little coordination that once in a while becomes an issue with large events that two communities are trying to hold on the same day.
Great.
We've also been working closely with the chamber as well. They're on the committee, the subcommittee to participate in the planning of this.
Great. We've been seeming to have very strong attendance at community events these days, so they're in demand.
COVID-nosed.
Yeah, yeah. So who's going to actually manage the calendars?
So we've actually been discussing that as a subcommittee as also. There's a couple, initially, we're actually going to have committee members and board members be moderators for the calendar. As far as submissions go, any they will be able to submit, but they won't immediately be posted. But those details are being worked out, and we'll present it when we need to hold the submission.
One last question. What would happen if someone typed AroundOurTown.com or dot org?
Currently, those are actually taken, so they'd actually get different sites altogether. Yeah, I did try to find one that had a dot com available. There was nothing actually kind of decent that was available for our calendar. I normally try to require both when I do them.
I've never even heard about dot events.
Yeah, last year, the Internet Commerce Commission or whatever, they enlisted twenty edition TLDs, including dot photography, dot events, dot coffee, so dot coms ran out. So they're starting to put other ones in there. Thank you.
Has our newest addition to the Downtown Board, Rachel, been by any chance involved with the committee? Or it sounds like she's got something to offer?
Yeah, she's given her input. She's attended a couple of board or committee meetings.
Great.
Yeah.
All right.
As a former chair of the Downtown Board, I'm excited to see this finally happen because this was a perennial problem of events being scheduled against each other in the community and folks and organizations not realizing. And we've thought over the years that there'd be significant advantage to the city having some control over where people go to get the information, and no one will step up to do it, so.
Yes, it's been a long time. We've talked about it for a while.
Yep.
All right, so you are looking for, this is just an update, you're not looking for--
We're looking for proof of the name.
I think having everyone nod their heads or not look like they're angry would be enough for us.
Is anybody angry?
Could we on our city website put up like a link to that?
We're actually investigating that too, so we'll have as a category for city events as well that we can pull into the city site, so that's another option as well.
If we on our city website, it could be a link to get to you guys.
Yep.
We want to disperse ourselves as much into all the community event-- including dot photography, dot events, dot coffee, so dot coms ran out. So they're starting to put other ones in there.
Thank you.
As our newest addition to the Downtown Board, Rachel's been by any chance involved with the committee? Or it sounds like she's got something to offer.
Yeah, she took, she's, she's given her input. She's attended a couple of board or committee meetings.
Great.
Yeah.
All right.
As a former chair of the Downtown Board, I'm excited to see this finally happen because this was a perennial problem of events being scheduled against each other in the community and folks and organizations not realizing. And we've thought over the years that there'd be significant advantage to the city having some control over where people go to get the information. And no one will step up to do it, so.
Yes, it's been a long time, we've talked about it for a while.
Yep.
All right, so you are looking for, this is just an update, you're not looking for...
We're looking for proof of the name, or are you...
I think having everyone nod their heads or not look like they're angry would be enough for us.
Is anybody angry?
Can we on our city website put up like a, like a link to that or something?
We're actually investigating that too. So we'll have as a category for city events as well that we can pull into the city site. So that's another option as well.
If we are on our city website, it could be a link to get to you guys.
Yep.
Yeah.
We want to disperse ourselves as much into all the community event locations as possible, so.
Sure.
Yep.
All righty. Good to go?
Thank you.
What are your picks? All right. Thanks, Chip.
Thank you.
Consider approval of a loan resolution for wastewater treatment plant. Tom.
So there's two documents in the packet. The first is the cover memo from Tom. And the second is the official declaration of intent. Paul Gianni has encapsulated both of Tom's two bolt points into one resolution. So we're in a motion to approve that. This is the first time that we're outlining the finance package. As you know, we're looking to finance upwards of eighteen million. And we got a grant of nearly three million from USDA with a loan of seven, which is pretty comprehensive of what we were getting from the, from the state. So, and round numbers, it's eighteen million that we're financing. And we got a grant for three that should allow us to circle back to that conversation by resolving the CSO issues down below.
Great.
Motion to approve the loan resolution.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the resolution requesting reimbursement of expenditures related to the fund.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Save the best for last.
All right.
We didn't have to ask you to come up and do it, you know?
I better mine.
Facade grants.
Just trying to stay on schedule.
You're going to have to slow down where we had a speed. All right. Moon Shadows and Jeff Seafood request for facade grants.
So I believe you have them in your packet. Moon Shadows has got a new color design that has been approved by the DAB. This was actually one of the first facades that was done as part of our facade program. However, they didn't get any contribution the first time they did it. They're requesting some now. They're repairing a lot of the rotten wood on the front of the building as well as on the side, replacing some window sills and stuff and changing their concept. I believe their bid is a little over twelve thousand. We're requesting a four thousand dollar grant to help them offset that. And Jeff Seafood has gone in and refurbished their signs. Those were about three and a half years old, previous owner had bought them. She contracted a separate individual to command and re applied the gold plating and sanded down and refinished them. And I believe, yes, their invoice for that was a little over twenty-five hundred. We're requesting twelve hundred dollars grant for them.
Do you, by any chance, know off the top of your head how many facade grants we've done and how much we've granted?
I don't, I can get it for you. I'm guessing we've probably done close to fifteen, sixteen.
And remind me, which fund does the...
Out of the Walmart.
Okay. And what's our balance roughly? I know it's in our other packet description.
So it was three fifty before we started. There's a good chunk of it was tied up in Penn South Main, which will be coming back. You know, to think of it as a receivable. So if you take that out, we've probably done a total of a hundred in facade grants, right?
Yeah. We, the first couple were big ones. And then we've had four, five thousand dollar ones. And then we did a couple of big ones with labor matches, so.
I guess I'm getting all the, but I could swear at one point we had done a five thousand dollar facade grant for Jeff's or...
We, we have, we did. We did distribute it because they haven't finished their project.
Okay.
So we have that reserved. But they, and that's gotten through. The building is in a trust. The executor of the trust has changed. I spoke with the new executor. They're trying to refinance the building because they need to go in and redo the gutter system. The gutter is an internal gutter system. And so they're trying to get that done. And he's assured me that if they can get that done, they'll finish the painting in the spring, which would probably require them to start over again to do the better buildings.
We did some.
But we haven't, we haven't distributed that. We didn't do any assistance on the signs originally.
So this would be additional to the funding, okay?
Yeah.
We did give them, we did give her money for carpet or flooring.
We loaned her. We, we, we lent her money for that. She paid, we did a twelve-month loan and she paid it back in about half months. That's been paid back, so.
All right.
So I move that we approve the four thousand dollars for the building that, the facade for the building that houses Moon Shadow and twelve hundred dollars for the sign of Jeff Seafood.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
We're still ahead of schedule.
All right, I understand there, Marty, I understand there. Mayor can I request that to be the first under other business?
Sure.
When it comes up on my agenda.
It's, it's now.
Here you are.
Ward one, St. Albans Shopping Center. I think it's in poor condition. Well, I want to say it's not in great condition. And here's a few things that I've noted. I noticed that there's windows broken up there that still have tape on. There are doors there that are now being blocked off so that nobody can utilize them. The windows and the doors up there are not being cleaned at all by anybody. The plants along the sidewalk only make the sidewalk passable for one person. And I know that for a fact with my wife when I walk that sidewalk all the time. And there are handwritten instructions on the windows directing people to go to certain places, two doors down or go to the next door, handwritten where you can barely read them. But I think it should be more professional than that. And I haven't heard anything going on with that center building where the bank used to be. And that is now turning to be unsightly, given all the improvements that we're making in the downtown. And that should be one of the jewels of the downtown, just like our park. You know, I consider a few of them, the Eldon, the Par, the Fountain, and the Downtown, Downtown Shopping Center. And I don't know if they just said, "The heck with it," or what. It seems like it always takes something from one of us to say something before someone wants to do something about it. I don't know if they're just not caring about it anymore, but I'm a little nervous about it because it doesn't make us look pretty.
Tim, what about the granite pillars for the bars? It has been a couple of times where either the bars are missing and the pillars are...
Yeah, they fixed those. Yeah, they fixed those. And they have a certain glue that they can put down and put those back together. But those are constantly being hit by cars or kicked over by...
I mean, they look pretty when they're there.
But the plants are absolutely just out of this world, unsightly, and hurt our sidewalk there. But the whole area is just, is not looking very well. And I don't know if they have come in, come to you for any kind of facade stuff or what you can do as part of their permits that they've had. Because I think that's where we had them the last time. There were conditions in their permits that said, "These are things that had to be done and maintained in order for you to get the permit." And someone might want to take a look.
Right. I think that's the first thing, we pull their site plan and see if there's any violations there. I haven't talked to Tony Pomero in a few months. I'd be happy to call him. He's always in the past and willing to work with us and stuff when we needed things done up there. I think as far as that center building where the credit union was, the credit union still has their ATM. And I know when People's Trust was up there, they had leased it for an additional year after they moved out just to prevent anybody else from moving in. So there may be something there that the credit union has in place that I'm not aware of. I can certainly ask him whether he'd be willing to share that with me or not, I'm not sure. There's been a couple of businesses up there that have taken over additional space next door, which may be the door.
I think they're exactly what I'm asking.
That we can certainly address. I know that he has, or a representative of their organization has contacted us regarding water allocation for a potential retailer that's going to go in there. So that may be an opportunity when, when that happens to take care of some of these things. I had a discussion with Tony the last time I spoke with him, talking about putting up some signage and renaming it, kind of representing the presence of Fourteenth Star. We've talked to them as well as represented the Fourteenth Star about building a mural on the back of the Planet Fitness Building. And they've engaged John Young. And we're getting some ideas and some quotes to do something with that. So there may be a possibility that we, I'm going to come back before you, and looking for some help on that. But I can certainly make a contact. He's got a property manager that's, we've worked with on other pieces in the city that, again, has been pretty responsive when we've called them. So I can certainly make a call.
They've done a good job clearing the snow. They've done a good job keeping the lawn open.
Yep.
And have done a good job fixing the rails and the concrete when someone has vandalized them.
Yep.
So they, it's not totally a bad...
Yeah, and I think in their defense, whenever we've called, whenever I've called them in the past, they've been responsive. So we can certainly reach out to them and give them the benefit of the doubt until something else changes, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks. Any other business?
Oh, I want to, I'll go last. If anyone else has anything.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay.
All right.
I just want to let Allen and the city know that the Public Works Building, the water treatment plant down at Lord Newman looks really good. So the fence, I like that picket fence more than the Big Stockade fence. That kind of looks a lot better. Tim, it never stinks on Lower Walden Street, even when it overflows. There's the sidewalk. Last year, a couple of trees were cut down on Edward Street. And the resident at twenty-two reached out to me. It seems like when their crane put down the pads so it didn't tip over, crushed the sidewalk in front of their house, their personal sidewalk. So from the sidewalk to their, to their house, that little bit there. And it also let a bit, left a big divot in their driveway. So, yeah, so while we're on that street, I don't know if that's something that we could fix real quick.
Chad, can you just email me the address?
Yeah.
We're down there now.
Yeah, that's what I figured. The other thing, truck ordinance. I'd really like us to take a look at that for trash. I don't know what other council members feel about that. I've gotten a couple of calls recently about five thirty, six in the morning. This past week, I think it was better, but I'm still hearing about that.
What, garbage trucks?
Yeah, coming at like five thirty, six in the morning.
Especially the calls that I've gotten mid-war for are mostly about in situations where there's, you know, like Berkeley Terrace, for example, backing all the way down early in the morning. That's a long road to go down with that rear warning beeper going at six o'clock, five thirty.
And most of the ones I've gotten is residents near businesses that have dumpsters. And they'll grab the dumpster and they'll dump it. And you can hear it hanging.
That car too, or something.
Yep. And then, do we know where we are on the speed bumps on Stoll? Are we going to have those in also before we start school year?
That's the plan.
Perfect. Yeah. And the last thing I want to mention, Madam Mayor and fellow council members, is, and this would be a great story for the messenger, a feel-good story. I want to recognize that there's a lot of volunteers in the city that do a lot of work for the city that are not ever recognized at all. So an example I have is Allen and his crew have been pretty busy the last couple of years. And the building in Home Park has needed and repainted. And it's been hit by graffiti many, many times. I think I counted about ten different shades of green on that building. Worked with Allen. Allen, the city, bought us the paint. And I had Tim Smith help me, but more importantly, Cole Woodland, eleven-year-old, seventh grader, spent four hours down there painting. So, you know, I just want to recognize that, you know, that there's nothing in it for him. So he's putting in his time to make our city look better, so. And there's, I know there's people that weed the gardens up in the park. There's people that pick up trash in the streets. These people, they're just like, you know, our little heroes that we don't ever recognize at all. So if there's something that we can do in the, in the future, I'm more than happy to support it.
I suggest that we use the city council meetings under business to recognize. But it's not everybody wants to come into meetings. They'd be more than welcome if they did. Chad and I chatted a little bit. Be happy to send a letter on behalf of the council to Cole. And you noted that would be something that would be nice for him to keep in his files as he gets older and needs to demonstrate his community service. But we can do that for anyone, so.
I mean, I'm sure eleven-year, eleven, twelve-year-old kid had a lot of things to do on a Saturday, decided to pee in the city building.
Cole, if you're watching on Channel Fifteen, thank you. All right. Is that everything, Chad?
That's all we got.
All right. Okay.
Chad inspired me for two more quick ones. So I'm not for shit. The lights on coming up Lake Street going onto Main Street. Sometimes the cars parked at the white line and it doesn't see the car. I've actually stood there and watched it and it will cycle through. And the car moves up a little bit past the white line and then it finds it, it gets it.
Let us know if that's happening now. Our signals guy thinks that a streetlight banner was in the way. And we're going to try and find out if we can fill out both things.
Is that turning north?
Yes, yes, turning north, yes.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I've said it many times, I'll say it again, because he's mentioned the word truck. Trucks cannot negotiate those turns at the top of that road. They cannot do it without, without causing a big traffic nightmare, hitting other cars or damaging property. They cannot make those turns either south or north. There should be a sign there somewhere that says, "No trucks pass this point."
We're looking at those options for that block of Lake Street after this summer's project is over, which gives trucks other options for getting onto Main Street, up and on of Main Street, and then getting to the Federal Street corridor.
Good.
All right.
Did anybody hear anything about how well the hotels are doing? I haven't heard anything.
They've got a capacity for, at least a week now.
Fantastic.
The last, the last four weekends they've been booked, they've turned people away.
Wow, that's awesome.
Some of you may not know, some of you may know, but I will not be seeking another term as clerk and treasurer. I'm planning on retiring in March. So if there's anybody out in the public that thinks they might be interested in this position, stop in and see me. I can tell you what it's all about.
That is big news.
It is.
Thanks, thanks, Sue.
Mic drop.
Okay. Mic drop. Wow. All right. How about some warrants?
Motion for warrant, seven twenty-one seventeen.
Second.
All in favor? Or should I ask discussion? Everything look good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Minutes.
Eight eleven seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that too.
Eight eleven seventeen.
Yep, so second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And now, meeting minutes, seven ten seventeen.
Motion to approve the minutes of the city council, July ten seventeen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, motion, is that it?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no...
A motion to adjourn. Do we have to stay here?
That's it.
We have to stay here.
Who's going to hear?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.